Seven o'clock, I would like to call the Rockdale County Board Education Regular Session to order. Let's warmly welcome Fenetta Gooden, Principal of Conyers Middle School. She will introduce an exceptional scholar who will share an inspiring message with us. After delivering her message, we kindly ask our scholar to stay and lead us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Gooden?
Good evening, Madam Chair Jackson Lett, Madam Vice Chair Jones, esteemed Board Members, Superintendent Chester, and guests. I am Fenetta Gooden, the proud principal of Conyers Middle School. And this evening, I have the opportunity to introduce to you all a young lady who I now deem as our future poet laureate. She has written a poem in honor of teachers as we are on the cusp of teacher appreciation season. So at this time, I introduce to you Ms. Leila Towns, eighth grade student at Conyers Middle School.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Leila Towns, and I will be reciting a poem written by myself named "To the Ones That Light the Way, Shaping Our Future." In halls where echoes tell of dreams once born, where laughter lingers and young hopes are sworn, there walks a force not clothed in fame or pride, but with a lesson book and a passionate soul as guide. Not drifting metals nor on screens displayed, yet daily in their quiet strength, they've shaped a world from words, from chalk, from earnest hands, the ones who help the young heart understand. They are the sculptors of the restless mind, the torchbearers who never fall behind. When darkness veils a student's wary sight, they do not run, they become the light. They see not just a grade or mark or a test, but potential even in unrest. When others say, "This child is lost," they stay and whisper, "No, let's try another way." They speak in patience, draw in silent pain, they weather storms of stress and without complaint. They give their time, their care, their truth, their name, and rarely ever ask for praise or fame. To the ones who teach us how to dream, to break the silence, swim upstream, to question not just how, but why, to fail then rise then touch the sky. To you who caught the shy unsure, who didn't know what they were for, who thought that they were small and strange, but you believed that they could change. To those who stayed a little late to discuss and save a student's fate, who saw the signs behind restless eyes and fought to hear the unheard cries. You teach the alphabet yes, but this is more than just letters. You change our world for the better. You teach the rhythm of courage in life shifting weathers. You teach the formulas and the facts, the timelines forever carved in history's tracks, but also how to think, to stand, to carve our future with your hands. You spark the artist, feeding the flame of every thinker yet unnamed. You build bridges from the past to futures fast, bold, and dreams steadfast. You are the anchor in classrooms wide where questions bloom and fears may hide. You steady minds, you help them grow, planting seeds they'll one day know. With every lesson patiently, you teach, you guide, you set minds free. A steady voice in each degree when the world grows cold, fast, and loud, and children drift lost in the crowd. You call them back with the steady voice and remind them they still have a choice. Not every hero wears a cape nor rides in ships through outer space. Some hold the line with lesson plans and carve your future with their hands. I've seen it in the spark of someone shy who never raised their hand but tried because you said, "I think you can," and they believed you more than any man. I've seen it in the scribbled notes of dreams written by hand, once torn at the seams, now stitched together by your time, your faith, your warmth, your steady climb. I've seen it in the graduate who spoke, tears on their cheeks, their voice slightly broke, saying, "I'm here because of you. You saw me when I couldn't view." So here's to the ones who dare to care, to fight each day though it isn't fair, to give and give and give once more and open yet another door. To the math teacher who said, "You've got this," to the coach who said, "No hit, but still awesome progress," to the music teacher who heard the tune before the student knew they would bloom, to the librarian who found the book that held different worlds and every look, to the science teacher with their lab coat smeared who showed how wonder perseveres, to the kindergarten hand that held, a trembling one, and gently spelled the words, "It's okay to be scared, I'll always be someone who cared." You are not just teachers, you are stars in dim skies, you are roots in deep soil, you are hope in young eyes, you are the light in rooms so dark for which you leave a permanent mark. You shape our future stone by stone while making school feel like home. When we look back at who we've become and trace the roads from where we've come, we'll find your fingerprints, your light, a lantern burning through the night. You shaped my path with healing hands, a legacy that forever stands. Though nurturing, you helped me soar and face the trials I couldn't before. You did more than teach, you shaped, you stirred, you gave us strength, you gave us words. So let the world raise up your name, let gratitude be your acclaim, for what you do will never fade though time moves on and years cascade. And if no one's told you loud and true, the world is better because of you. For every mind you choose to guide, for every truth you stood beside, we thank you, we see you, we carry you with us everywhere we go as you help improve our status quo. The world forever shaped because of your dedication, your sparkling personalities led to endless conversation. Minds shape and hearts have grown through your enthusiasm consistently shown. A student is like a flower blooming with time, but couldn't have bloomed without its passionate teacher as guide. Thank you.
Leila? Leila, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisibly with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, Ms. Leila. That was so beautiful, and I'm sure the teachers that heard it will really appreciate it. Do I hear motion to approve the agenda as presented?
It's a move, Heather.
Madam Chair, prior to the adoption of the agenda, I do want to make a motion to amend the agenda to move Superintendent's update from Item 9 to follow recess.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I second that motion.
It's been motion and second to move Superintendent's update to follow the recess. All in favor? End of discussion, all opposed. Seven zero, we will move that. Thank you so very much. I am thrilled to warmly welcome Dr. LaShawn McLean, who will be showcasing the remarkable achievements of the staff and students at Shoal Creek Elementary School.
Good evening, Chairwoman Jackson Lett, Vice Chair Jones, Board Members, Superintendent Chester, Cabinet Members, and guests. I am Dr. LaSharon McLean, Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Schools. I have the pleasure of supporting Shoal Creek Elementary. I greet you on behalf of Dr. Richmond, the proud principal of the esteemed Shoal Creek Elementary School. Unfortunately, Dr. Richmond was unable to join us tonight, however, she has provided an introduction that I will share with you. Dr. Richmond is excited to share the remarkable work being done by the student leaders in the Shoal Creek Beta Club. The student leaders will have the opportunity to address you shortly, showcasing their dedication to excellence and their commitment to making a positive impact within their school and community through their involvement in the Beta Club. These students exemplify the values of leadership, service, and academic achievement that they hold dear at Shoal Creek. In addition to hearing from the student leaders, you will have an opportunity to witness firsthand the incredible work happening at Shoal Creek through a video presentation. This video will highlight the innovative programs, dedicated teachers, and outstanding achievements of the students that make Shoal Creek such a great place. Dr. Richmond is immensely proud of the collaborative effort of the students, teachers, staff, and parents that have contributed to the success of Shoal Creek Elementary. Together, they are shaping the leaders of tomorrow and fostering culture of excellence that set their school apart. At this time, I would like to turn it over to Ms. Hicks and the Shoal Creek students.
Good evening, esteemed Board Members and guests. My name is Ms. Billy Hicks, and I am a fourth grade teacher and proud Junior Beta Club sponsor at Shoal Creek Elementary. This evening, we want to share with you one of the many great things happening at SCE, and that is our Junior Beta Club. So without further ado, we have our members here to share with you their experiences.
Good evening. My name is Chloe Hambrick, SCE's Beta Club President, and my job is to make all the decisions and make sure our club is in order. We we have had many community service ideas as in candy grams and coat drives, and I'm so excited and ready to do many more. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sienna Goings, and I'm the Vice President for the Shoal Creek Elementary Beta Club. When I first joined, I was in a mix of pride and gratitude. I knew it was about service and leadership, but what I didn't realize is how much this club has to do with our future. Some of the most meaningful moments of this didn't happen during big events or projects. They happened in quiet moments. Watching a teammate stay late to clean up after offering a helping hand or hearing a thank you after helping someone, those are the moments that stick with you. Being Vice President has been a responsibility, it has also been a gift. To our members, you've inspired me, your kindness, commitment, your passion for service, it's real and it matters. To our sponsors and staff, thank you for your guidance and believing in us. You've given us a place to grow and lead with purpose. Beta Club isn't a title on a resume, it's a piece of who we are, and I'm so excited to see what is going to happen and the impact we have on the future. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ansley Smith, and I am a Beta Club member at Shoal Creek Elementary. I am a fifth grade student, and I am here to tell you about some of my experience and how Beta Club has helped me grow as a leader. In Beta Club, we set the example for other students. We make good grades and good choices about our behavior. I have completed ten hours of community service this year. I help teachers after school and read books to the littles in pre-K and kindergarten. Being a leader is very important as a member of Beta Club and in life. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lonnie King, and I am a Beta Club member at Shoal Creek Elementary. I am Sergeant at Arms. My role is to maintain order during meetings and events, which is something I'm very good at. I help set up meeting spaces, I collect attendance, I also clean up, and I also adjourn meetings. Some activities I have been a part of is the Warm Things Clothing Drive, a Candygram fundraiser for Valentine's Day, and also voluntary for various activities for my school. For example, award ceremonies and Field Day. Being a member of Beta Club taught me to take on more leadership roles and improve my leadership skills to make myself better as well as my community. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Rockdale County Board Members, Shoal Creek Elementary Principals, Teachers, Staff, and Friends. My name is Tavon Tonic, and it is an honor to stand before you as a member of the Shoal Creek Elementary Junior Beta Club. I am excited to share some of the great things that our esteemed organization has worked hard towards to make a difference at Shoal Creek Elementary and in our community. Beta Club is more than just a club, it's a community of dedicated individuals who strive for excellence in academics, leadership, and service. Beta Club members are the torchbearers of our school. We have been committed to making a positive impact on our campus and beyond. We volunteer to read to our younger peers in kindergarten through third grade. We are always first to volunteer to help with many school activities and have even organized a warm clothing collection drop to donate to those in need within our community. This year has been filled with opportunities for growth, collaboration, and engaging in community service. After all, these are our memories for our future to come. At Shoal Creek Elementary, our Junior Beta Club is an environment where every member feels valued, inspired, and empowered. Together, we embrace challenges with enthusiasm and determination. We love to inspire each other, which has made this a great school year. Thank you for your time, and I hope I have highlighted how much it is an honor to serve as a proud Junior Beta Club member here at Shoal Creek Elementary School.
Good evening. My name is Lena Jones, and I am a fourth grade Vice Secretary, Junior Beta Club Member. First of all, the Junior Beta Club is more than just service, it's a part of who we are. The Junior Beta Club is about dedication, hard work, and perseverance. It's not all about the projects we do, it's about the outcome and the progress that we work towards it.
Good evening, Board Members, and thank you for having me. My name is Lindsay English, and I'm a fourth grade Beta Club Member at Shoal Creek Elementary. I would like to share with you some of the amazing things we have been doing this year for community service. This year, I had the opportunity to read to the younger students in the school. Not only did I enjoy this time, I believe they did as well. This was a great opportunity to give back to the students while working on our leadership skills. We also held a candy gram sale during Valentine's. This was a big success. Everyone was so excited to give their special someone a sweet treat, and the Beta Club was able to raise money to assist with our future projects. One activity that I enjoyed most was our clothing drive. We collected coats and sweaters which were then donated to a local shelter. I liked this project because it was a great way to get the community involved with giving back to those in need. I have enjoyed my time thus far in Beta Club, and I look forward to the many things we will do the next year. I would also like to take this time to thank our sponsors, Ms. Hicks, Ms. Jones, and Ms. Bracy, for all their help this year. I appreciate you all. Thank you for your time.
Building, trying to figure out how our building's gonna work, what we may need to figure out how our building's gonna work, because we're building a paper maker that makes paper out of recycled paper. And I was trying to think of how we're gonna get everything done, think about how much time we have left.
Tell me the title.
Ants.
Good job.
And ants on a hat.
What you've seen here tonight was a glimpse of the many great things that are happening at SCE. Thank you to our Beta Club members for their service and for their leadership and for embodying the pillars of Beta, and thank you for allowing us to share this with you tonight.
Thank you all. Well, it just warms our heart when you all come and showcase our talents from students here in Rockdale County, so thank you all. Next, Ms. Ball, we'll recognize and celebrate our scholars and staff. Board Members and Ms. Chester, please join me.
Thank you, and good evening, Chairwoman Jackson Lett, Vice Chair Jones, our Board Members, our Superintendent, Ms. Chester, and all of our guests. It's nice to have a room full here to recognize this evening. We have several groups. Thank you. So, parents and students, students, when I call your name, if you'll come up front, and you will get a certificate, and then stay in the center until your whole group is up here, and we'll do a group photo, okay? Parents, you're welcome to come up behind me and take photos, but we will put all of the photos that Rita is gonna take on our social media, you're welcome to grab them there as well, okay? All right, so big smiles, everybody. We're here to celebrate. So we're gonna start with the Georgia Student Technology Competition, or GASTC, is an annual event that showcases creativity, collaboration, communication, and critical thinking skills. Students are evaluated and recognized for planning and creating projects that demonstrate their skills in a wide range of digital technologies. This is the highest level of student technology competition in Georgia, with over 900 projects representing the work of over 1,000 students judged at the competition each spring. Finalists who receive first place at the recognized regional competitions may compete at state, and you may recall that our tech fair is a recognized regional competition. The competition is open to all third through 12th grade students residing in the state. There are multiple categories in the competition. Tonight, we're gonna recognize students who placed at the State Technology Fair. Placing first at the State Tech Fair for the 11th and 12th grade category in digital photo productions from the Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology, Jaden Chaney. Winning second place in the ninth and 10th category for 3D modeling, also from the Magnet School, Charlotte Wright. Also placing second in the ninth and 10th grade category for 3D modeling, Ryan Lynn. Winning third place at the state for the 7th, 8th grade category in 3D modeling from Edwards Middle School, Jackson Howard. Winning third place at the state in 9th and 10th grade category for robotics from Salem High School, Lennox Skyers. Winning third place at the state in the 11th and 12th grade category for 3D modeling from the Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology, Gavin Reese. Rita, is this in your way? Move it back. How are we doing? Congratulations. I think I'll look backwards with this next time because the groups are gonna get bigger. Okay, this group is a fairly large group. All right, and as everybody knows, this is springtime, and springtime is super busy in our district. We have students on college visits, we have students down at our empty bowls fundraiser down at the middle school, so a lot happening. So we know that some of our students can't be here with us tonight, but we're gonna call everybody's name who has one in any of these categories. And our principals, if they're available, they'll take them back to school, or if a family member is here, they can take their certificate or we will send them to the school, okay? And because we also know that this is being livestreamed and recorded, that later the students can look back and at least hear their name being recognized. So tonight, we're gonna recognize our middle and high school level regional science fair winners who advanced from our regional science fair. Again, our science fair here in the district is a recognized regional science fair, and went on and placed in the Georgia Science and Engineering Fair, which is the state level science and engineering fair. So we're gonna start with the junior division, and we have two students, both are from General Ray Davis Middle School. It's gonna be a little long because they win these great specialty awards that have these fancy names. So first, this first student won So first, this first student won first honors, junior division best in category, Naval Science Award, and the Thermo Fisher Scientific Junior Innovators Challenge nomination at the Georgia Science and Engineering Fair, Joshua Buchanan. Our next student, also from General Ray Davis Middle School, winning fourth honors and junior division best in category at the Georgia Science and Engineering Fair, Spencer Fortson. So Spencer, we're gonna take your picture with our board members, and then we'll move on to the senior category. Congratulations. Now, the following students are all from the Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology, so I won't say that 10 times. All right, our first student won the Bowringer Engelheim Animal Health Biotechnology Award at the State Science and Engineering Fair, Ari Foster. This student won the Inspiring Excellence Award at the State Science and Engineering Fair, Alicia Wright. This student won the Regeneron Biomedical Science Award, again at the State Science and Engineering Fair, Mackenzie Broughton. This student won the RICO Sustainable Development Award at the state level, Dani Donald. Also won the, Dani also won the Westling College Math and Science Award at the State Science and Engineering Fair. Now, the next three students are the Regional Fair Regeneron ISF Regional Finalist. And what this means is they bypass the state and go right to international. Yes, so the following three students, following three students will just go straight to international. Sidney Hammett, Gavin Reese, and Alex Rojas. Our next student won Georgia Science and Engineering Fair First Honors, Trenton Smith. You actually have this student up there, but Mackenzie Broughton also won Georgia Science and Engineering Fair Second Honors. And Sidney's up there, too. Sidney won fourth honors at the Georgia Science and Engineering Fair. Also winning fourth honors at the Georgia Science and Engineering Fair, Delina Nguyen. I'm just gonna stay here, but then you can't see. Let me go back to the center here because I'm in I'm in view of folks behind me. Don't let anybody's view. Okay. We need one on wheels, I think. This is Chester. Oh, this is an exciting group because we have some hot off-the-press news for the two students that are being recognized here. The K-12 Inventor Prize is an invention and entrepreneurship program at Georgia Tech that challenges students to identify real world problems and design novel solutions through analysis, creativity, and a scientific method. The program empowers K-12 students with authentic invention and entrepreneurship experiences as they become the next generation in the workforce. We are recognizing these two students for the state K-12 Inventor Prize Specialty Award, but they are also going to nationals. Yeah. Our first student, Prakash Gupta, and Gavin Reese. Congratulations. All right, this next group is the Science Team from Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology. And we'll do this in three different groups because we have students doing kind of three different things within this group. So don't do what I did when I read about the Stingray Bowl. It is not the name of the team. It is the name of the competition. I was calling them the stingrays. They're not the stingrays. They are the Science Team from Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology. The Southern Stingray Bowl is the regional qualifying tournament where the team from the Magnet School earn the bid to nationals. Yeah. They are one of 18 teams moving forward from the regional National Ocean Sciences Bowl, or NOSB, competitions held this year. The NO-SB is building our next generation of marine scientists, policymakers, teachers, explorers, researchers, technicians, environmental stewards, and informed community members by educating them in ocean topics, in ocean science topics that are increasingly relevant today and into the future. In each competition, students are tested on their knowledge of ocean science disciplines through a buzzer-style, multiple-choice question, and open-ended team challenge questions. The national finals competition will be held in May in a virtual head-to-head competition on Zoom. All competing students are eligible to apply for the National Ocean Scholar Program, which provides tuition assistance for NOSB students who have an interest in pursuing an ocean or environmental science major in their first year of post-high school education. So tonight, we will start out first with the team that won third place in the 2025 Southern Stingray Bowl. So this is our third-place team, starting with Delina Nguyen. Kendall Parker. Caleb Barnwell. Joanna Ree. And at this time, I'm going to ask, I know one of our science team coaches is here, and I'm gonna ask this coach to come up in the photo with this group, and then stay up for the next two groups. And I I know that Coach Diana Kennan is here with us. Diana, if you'll please come up? Congratulations. And again, Ms. Kennan, if you'll just hang out up there for team two, then you won't have to come back and forth. All right, now this team, it's all part of the science team, but this group of students won first place and will be a National Ocean Sciences Bowl competitor. All right, winning first place, Isabella Waller. Daniel Nguyen. Andrew Land. Chanel Solomon. And Allison Hune. Now, the following group of students are students who are on the science team, and they participated in the State Science Olympiad, okay? And I believe we have maybe, I was thinking we had students who won more than one in this category as well, so we may have some duplicates. Okay. We are gonna start out with a student who won ninth place in the tower category in the State Science Olympiad, Isabella Waller. Winning ninth place bungee, Sage Chandler. Also winning ninth place tower, Amber Lee. Winning 10th place in the state for electric vehicle, Allison Hune. Also winning 10th place for electric vehicle, Ayet Matine. Winning ninth place in bungee, Ricky Reed. Winning 10th place in optics, Ayet Matine. Also winning 10th place in optics, Andrew Land. Winning 10th place in the state for science in the news, Joanna Ree. Also winning 10th place for science in the news, Nuno Harris. Winning 10th place in the state for robot tour, Daniel Nguyen. Also winning 10th place in the state for robot tour, Salvador Cervantes. Congratulations. Now, I've got more. There's more. But we're gonna, we're gonna back up just a minute because we have a student who just joined us. Was this the next group you pulled? Okay. All right, we're gonna back up. Okay, so we are going to back up for just a minute because we had a student who joined us that we've already called, but we're gonna back up to the tech fair, okay? And remember, I called winning third place tech at the state tech fair for ninth and 10th grade robotics from Salem High School, Lennox Skyers. Come on up, Lennox. Congratulations, Lennox. The Georgia Forensic Coaches Association is a governing body for speech and debate programs throughout the state of Georgia. The association connects educators with resources and opportunities for their students that enrich their research abilities, critical thinking, and leadership skills. The association's mission is to promote and develop students' communication and research skill, research skills, vital assets for a lifetime of quality participation in a democratic society. The activity gets that funny name forensic because it is public speaking, or speaking in the public forum, just as forensic medicine is medicine practiced on behalf of the public, for example, the work of a coroner. Tonight, we congratulate students from the Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology for their placings at the state competition. This student won the after-dinner speaking state champion award and the original spoken word poetry second place, Magic Boyd. Our next student won three awards, Poetry Interpretation State Champion Award, Prose Reading State Champion Award, and the original spoken word poetry third place, Gabrielle Christie. Winning fourth place in the state for after dinner speaking, Matthew McCoy. Winning third place in prose reading, Dayana Faiz. And our coach for the 2024-2025 season, which included these three state champion awards, Cherie Ulo. Congratulations. Tonight, we are excited to celebrate the math team at Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology. Both the JV and varsity teams earned bids to the state math tournament organized by the Georgia Council of Teachers of Mathematics. Highlights of the season included a first place finish at the Columbus State University Mathematics Tournament for the varsity team, and the JV team won fourth place overall at the state math tournament. We are excited to celebrate these mathematicians and their coaches. We will start with the JV team, and then we'll have our coaches join and remain up front when we bring the varsity team up. Again, winning fourth place in the state math tournament, Javier Inararity. Zachary Corey. Ryan Lynn. Marcus McElroy. Patrick Randall. Francisco Rodriguez. Rebecca Sistrat. Uriah Wilson. And our first coach of both the JV and varsity teams, David Hornbeck. And our second coach, who is also a state finalist for Teacher of the Year, Dr. Charles Garner. Dr. Dr. Garner's going. Okay. Maybe come in. Squeeze in, there we go. Congratulations, JV math team. JV team members, you can have a seat, and we'll bring the, we'll bring the varsity team up. Yes, Dr. Garner, if you'll please stay, that would be great. So our varsity math team members, again, winning first place in the Columbus State University Mathematics Tournament. First, Precious Babajade. Caleb Barnwell. Gabrielle Christie. Harley Gibson. Prakash Gupta. Ian Morgan. Delaina Page. And Rebecca Sistrat. We will now take a five-minute recess to congratulate our recipients. Okay, I'm stopped. I'm stopped. I'm stopped.
We're turning from slaughters.
No, right? All right. Delano's. Okay, right here. Hey, board members, please return to the podium. It is now 8:03, and we're going to call the meeting back to order. Next, we will have Superintendent's updates by Ms. Sherri Chesser. Thank you, Madam Chair Jackson-Litt, Vice Chairwoman Jones, board members, and to our guests in attendance. We have been investigating a reported incident involving an unapproved social studies activity based on a historical figure in American history. The historical figure was Ruby Bridges, which is part of the Georgia Social Studies Standards. Before I continue, I would like our social studies coordinator to please come up and explain this standard.
Good evening, Madam Chair Jackson-Litt, Madam Vice Chair Jones, board members, Superintendent Chesser, cabinet, and guests. I'm Verna Lisa Printup, and I am the Social Studies Coordinator for Rockdale County Public Schools. So I do want to talk with you briefly about the Grade One Social Studies curriculum and the resources. So in first grade, our students learn about historical figures throughout American history and the significance of their contributions. As you can see, there are historical figures like Benjamin Franklin and Thomas Jefferson, and our students wrap up the year learning about Ruby Bridges. One thing that you may notice is that Ruby Bridges is the same age as the students that are learning about her. As students learn about Ruby's contributions to United States history, they also are asked to compare and contrast their everyday lives to Ruby Bridges' everyday life. Now, the state gives us specific examples about food, clothing, homes, transportation, communication, and recreation. This standard, though, does not stand alone. Our students also learn about the geography and how it contributes to the time and place of the historical figure, as well as how the specific historical figure displayed positive character traits. Throughout the year, our students learn about traits like fairness, respect for others, respect for the environment, courage, equality, tolerance, perseverance, and commitment. And by this time of the year, they're actually able to decide which of these positive character traits they can use to describe our historical figures. So for teachers, we provide unit guides to help them plan their lesson. In the unit guide, there is a big idea that explains why this person is important, and some key terms and characteristics, some themes to learn about as they're learning about these historical figures. Our goal is starting our students at kindergarten all the way up through 12th grade, then being able to see patterns throughout history and patterns over time. We identify those specific standards again for the teachers in one column, but then we focus on specific skills that should also be applied to these social studies lessons as our students are learning about historical figures. We provide pre-assessments or activities to see what our students already know, to help them understand what they're learning about and to make the learning stick. We provide formative assessments or little activities that help check for understanding as students are learning about the information. And then finally, examples and ideas for summative assessments so that our teachers can understand what our students have learned and to see if our students have matched the learning target and success criteria to their learning outcomes. We provide print and digital learning resources for our teachers to use in their lesson plans that are aligned explicitly to the standard. Many of the resources come from the Georgia Department of Education, but we've also purchased resources like Studies Weekly, which I talked to you all about last week, and we've purchased readers to help our students understand these concepts. Because if we go back to the standard, it did say read and understand. So we've purchased class sets for students to read, but we've also purchased small group packets for students to, as they're learning to read, be able to read with the teacher in small group. So in our Studies Weekly, there is an addition that's dedicated specifically to Ruby Bridges. So it starts out explaining where she is from, explaining who she was as a little girl so that our students can connect with her. Our students are able to engage in inquiry-driven instruction through the Studies Weekly reader with an essential question like, how did Ruby Bridges help change schools? Throughout the reader, students learn about the topics that are important to understanding who Ruby Bridges is as a historical figure, and then our students get to see what Ruby Bridges looks like today as an adult and how she continues to contribute to society.
Thank you, Ms. Printup. I asked that Ms. Printup share that information because there have been a lot of comments, statements, and conclusions that were made based on some misinformation. As she just shared, Rockdale County Public Schools provides our teachers with curriculum documents that include recommended and vetted resources and activities. In this instance, the teacher did not follow the approved resources or recommended lessons provided by the district for teaching this Georgia standard. Upon being made aware of the two signs posted in the school cafeteria, the district's human resources department immediately launched an investigation, and school administrators communicated directly with the parents of students who may have been affected. The principal also sent a letter to all parents and guardians at the school. Our preliminary investigation determined that this activity was not included in the teacher's submitted lesson plan, nor was it approved by the school administrators. The teacher did not have any discriminatory intent, and this was not a prank. A lot of things going on with kids' life that y'all don't even be aware of. All y'all deal with, most of the people deal with A-students. But who deals with the kids that can't read and spell good? That don't mean we ain't got no character. That don't mean we're not smart. We just deal with stuff different than other people. But if it had not been for my teachers knowing that I was smart, I could talk it, but I couldn't write it because I couldn't hear good. And then I didn't never know my syllables. They just throw me and move me on and throw you back and say, "Oh, you're not smart enough." So I'm glad I got all y'all to look after these kids. And then another thing, if we don't teach our history. When we came to Rockdale County, I got a daycare on Flat Shoals. They used to come throw trash in front of my little black children and call them niggas. And I had to defend them little black children. We had neighbors next door. Son was in ROTC and walk around with a gun with a Confederate flag on the gun, and we had to deal with that. We're not going backwards. So all of y'all, so that means that we can't teach black history. That mean none of y'all have history. They want to wipe out all y'all history. I seen all colors today, but most is most of the blacks now. So why we can't teach our history? Why we gonna wipe out all y'all good, successful people? They say we never existed. We never changed Rockdale County. We changed Rockdale County to a better county. And we gonna keep it like that, and we're not going backwards. We're going forward, and I thank y'all for appreciating. And we gonna do black history, and we gonna do white history. Why we gotta keep doing white history and never talk about black history? It's not legal. Y'all go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Josie Dean. Next, we have Ms. Kiva Copeland.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Chesser, Madam Chairwoman, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Rockdale County Community. My name is Kiva Copeland, and I serve as the current president of the Rockdale County branch of the NAACP. I stand here today commenting concerning the incident that took place at Honey Creek Elementary School last week. The NAACP was deeply disturbed by the actions of someone in our school system. The NAACP posted a quote today that stated, "Inclusion means creating environments where everyone feels valued, respected, and empowered." And that's our goal that we want to support. The act is offensive, no matter the context. And while it was stated that there was no ill intent, it does present the question of what was the intent? What feelings and outcome was expected? We find the action is unacceptable and further request and acknowledge the following. One, ensuring accountability and those who engage in the incident. We do understand that the county is addressing this as a personnel matter, and that is considered private. So we do respect that part. Asking for actual acknowledgement that it was considered inappropriate and that there is zero tolerance for this type of offensive action. Lastly, we're looking for clarification on the policy related to curriculums, and I appreciate the presentation that came from the curriculum development team. And just to better understand what are the expectations when teachers are wanting to step outside of what that vetted process is. Our thing is, we just don't want it to happen again. So it is, things have happened, you all are addressing it, and we appreciate that. How do we prevent it from happening again? How do we ensure that others are not emboldened to come with something that's a little bit more creative or continue to think outside the box that may be offensive or hurtful to our community, especially to our young elementary school students? We do appreciate all of the work that you all do and all of the work that all of the teachers in the Rockdale County system does. We know that they are here and that they are fighting for our students and wanting to ensure that they go out there and they have the knowledge that they can be empowered citizens. But we just want to make sure that we are continuing to create inclusive and empowering environments. I think we can't place that assumption on everyone else. I, as well as I'm sure the NAACP, understand that this is not indicative of an inclusive environment. If there is a lesson that is directed to a specific group of students, that is understandable. We do not understand that the context that it was left within a specific group of students, that there were others outside of that potential first-grade class that actually experienced it. So our thing is, we just want to make sure that we're continuing to encourage inclusive environments and that there is a clear understanding that is a zero tolerance policy for actions such as this. Thank you, and I hope y'all have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Copeland. I would like now to hand it over to Ms. Shirley Chesser for Cabinet Updates.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. At this time, we'll begin our superintendent's cabinet updates. I believe first off today, we have the Office of Leadership and Learning with our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Shawna Miller.
That's a long walk. Good evening, Board Chair Jackson Lett, Vice Chair Jones, Board Members, Superintendent Chesser, Cabinet, and Community Members. I'm Shawna Miller. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Academic Programs. That's the first time I've said that to y'all, so thank you. And I'm here to talk to you tonight and respectfully request your support for the district's recommended summer reading materials for students in grades pre-K through 12. So as we prepare for the upcoming shift in our English and Language Arts Standards, we recognize how important it is to align our instructional resources, including our summer reading, with the skills and competencies our students will be expected to develop in the coming years. So the titles included in this year's summer reading list, they've been carefully selected to reflect this alignment. Our team of educators, literacy specialists, and school leaders have curated these lists to ensure they support not only engagement, but also the analytical, interpretive, and language skills outlined in the new forthcoming standards. So these resource kits are differentiated by grade level to meet students where they are developmentally. So for our early learners in grades pre-K through second grade, our focus is on foundational literacy and fostering just a love of books through read alouds, interactive storytelling, along with a summer workbook that is aligned with the new Georgia ELA standards, and activities for parents to engage with their child's learning throughout the summer. And these are little book bags that come along with it. For our students in grades three through five, we've selected a variety of fiction and nonfiction texts that promote comprehension, vocabulary development, and critical thinking. These kits also include a grade-appropriate workbook and parent engagement components as well. All the middle and high school-level students will receive rigorous and relevant texts that support deeper literary analysis, real-world connections, and preparations for success in their fall ELA courses. Summer reading novel purchases also include a specialty text to support students in the pre-AP and the AP English courses. Students enrolled in those advanced courses will be provided with their grade-level assigned summer reading as well as a specialty nonfiction text to support their pre-AP and AP courses. So funding, here's the good news. Funding for this initiative is going to be provided through the L4GA grant. We're able to close that grant out, and we've got some funds where we get to do some awesome things for our students. This means there's no additional cost to the district, and we'll be able to ensure that students have access to the quality books that are aligned with new ELA standards. The timing could not be better. So the superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the purchase of teacher-created materials totaling $381,340.05 to support our summer learning. Purchasing those reading and learning materials for students in grades K-5 helps prevent that summer learning loss, foster a real love for reading, and ensure that students return to school prepared and engaged this fall. And you'll see that funding source is L4GA. The superintendent will also recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the purchase of follet content solutions totaling $54,149.36 to support our summer learning materials. Investing in these summer reading and learning materials for students is essential to prepare them for shifts in the new sixth through eighth ELA standards and to mitigate that summer learning loss, ensuring they return to school ready to meet academic challenges and succeed. And the superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the purchase of follet content totaling $110,417.47 to support summer learning materials for all high school ELA courses. Investing in summer reading and learning materials for students is essential to prepare them for the new shifts in the ninth through 12 ELA standards and to mitigate the summer learning loss, ensuring they return to school ready to meet their academic challenges as well. Very unique opportunity to be able to purchase these for every single student in the district. But I appreciate your continued commitment to our students and everybody else that has worked on this. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about L4GA.
I have one question, big question, and I want to thank you. I appreciate that we are considering the learning laws. Or some people call it the summer slide that takes place during the summer. So I'm glad that we have these resources for all of the grade levels. Now, does this replace, remember the students had the summer reading list? So does this replace the list?
Yeah, it is going to be a new list because with the new book, with the new standards, we really needed some new text to go along with those units. So last board meeting, y'all approved the novel set. So we're purchasing the sets for every ELA classroom. But these are actually, it's some of the same titles, but it's for each individual student. So they'll have it at home, in class, and hopefully they'll share it with their brothers, sisters, mothers, and fathers.
Thank you, and I love the connect with the parents, to give them parents resources to assist their children with their reading. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Have a great night. I appreciate you. Yes, please.
Is it digital resource, or this is all?
This is all print resources.
And so you said that it is not replacing the summer reading list they normally have?
This is going to become the summer reading list. We're just providing the books for them. So they don't have to fight over them at the library or not have access to them. They will have them in their homes and in their hands.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Up next, we have the Office of Student Support Services. Dr. Smith Dixon and your team. I see Mrs. Sayago coming up.
Good evening, Board Chair, Mrs. Jackson Lett, Vice Chair Ms. Jones, Board Members, Superintendent Mrs. Chesser, Community Cabinet, excuse me, and guests. I'm Megan Sayago, Director of Community, Family, and Student Engagement. And I'm pleased to be here tonight to speak to you about the McKinney-Vento Assistance Act to support students and families experiencing homelessness. While our district is geographically small, the lived experiences of our 15,000-plus students in pre-K through 12th grades are anything but small. Many of our students have faced extreme adversity due to unstable housing. In addition to providing resources and support, our CPS aims to instill hope and possibility in each of our students to eliminate the mustn'ts, the shouldn'ts, and the won'ts. The McKinney-Vento Act defines homeless children and youth as those who lack a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence, including those who are sharing housing with others or doubled up because of some kind of economic hardship or similar reason. It also includes those who are staying in a hotel, motel, or RV park, those staying in a shelter or other transitional housing, and those living in cars, public spaces, or other settings not meant for residence. Sometimes, these students are not in the care of their parents or legal guardians, so they are deemed to be unaccompanied homeless youth. These definitions are somewhat broad and may seem beyond the scope of what we think of as homelessness. Still, students and families in each of these situations are eligible under the McKinney-Vento Act and are provided with support and services as needed. Imagine a student hanging out in a local parking lot. Kicked out by his guardian, he has nowhere to go. He doesn't know where he will sleep or if he can remain in school. This is an example of an unaccompanied homeless youth and a real example of homelessness in Rockdale County. Let's take a look at some data. These figures are from the 2022-2023 school year. I'll share some more recent district data in a moment. Nationwide, approximately 1.37 million pre-K through 12th grade students were identified as homeless in 2023, about 2.8% of the school-age population. Georgia reported just over 40,000 students as homeless. In Rockdale, we served 1,255 students that school year, or 8%, as you can see. As you can see, the majority of these students were doubled up or sharing housing with other families. Nationwide, 75% of families experiencing homelessness reported shared housing. For Georgia, that percentage was 71%, and for Rockdale, it was 86%. The number of students identified as homeless in Rockdale has been increasing since the 2021 school year, with a peak of just over 1,900 students identified in the 2324 school year. This year, we have identified just under 1,600 students over the course of the school year. The upward trend is reflective of a more robust identification procedure as well as shifts in the housing market, leading to more families doubling or even tripling up in residences across the district. Students experiencing homelessness are not confined to one school or one corner of the district. Looking at our elementary schools, some of the larger populations, Flat Shoals Elementary, for example, may be due to the number of hotels in their school zone. Imagine a mother living in a hotel with her children. She accompanies her oldest child to the hospital as she gives birth and becomes a mother herself. Her younger children become locked out of the hotel room because their room has not been paid for. District staff and community members scramble to pay the bill so the children can be let back into the hotel room. This is homelessness in Rockdale County. Data are similarly distributed for our middle schools with students identified as experiencing homelessness at each school. And high school data also indicates students experiencing homelessness at each school. As we saw with the 2022-2023 data, the majority of the students who have been identified under McKinney-Vento this school year are sharing housing, with 1,395 in this category. Approximately 134 reported living in a hotel or motel. Some families have been displaced due to flood or fire and stay in hotels temporarily. Others reside in hotels due to the inability to secure a lease or rental agreement because of poor credit or other barriers. Hotel stays can range from a few days to multiple years. Fifty-three of our students experienced homelessness. Act and are provided with support and services as needed. Imagine a student hanging out in a local parking lot. Kicked out by his guardian, he has nowhere to go. He doesn't know where he will sleep or if he can remain in school. This is an example of an unaccompanied homeless youth and a real example of homelessness in Rockdale County. Let's take a look at some data. These figures are from the 2022-2023 school year. I'll share some more recent district data in a moment. Nationwide, approximately 1.37 million pre-K through 12th grade students were identified as homeless in 2223, about 2.8% of the school-age population. Georgia reported just over 40,000 students as homeless. In Rockdale, we served 1,255 students that school year, or 8%, as you can see. As you can see, the majority of these students were doubled up or sharing housing with other families. Nationwide, 75% of families experiencing homelessness reported shared housing. For Georgia, that percentage was 71%, and for Rockdale, it was 86%. The number of students identified as homeless in Rockdale has been increasing since the 2021 school year, with a peak of just over 1,900 students identified in the 2324 school year. This year, we have identified just under 1,600 students over the course of the school year. The upward trend is reflective of a more robust identification procedure, as well as shifts in the housing market, leading to more families doubling or even tripling up in residences across the district. Students experiencing homelessness are not confined to one school or one corner of the district. Looking at our elementary schools, some of the larger populations, Flat Shoals Elementary, for example, may be due to the number of hotels in their school zone. Imagine a mother living in a hotel with her children. She accompanies her oldest child to the hospital as she gives birth and becomes a mother herself. Her younger children become locked out of the hotel room because their room has not been paid for. District staff and community members scramble to pay the bill so the children can be let back into the hotel room. This is homelessness in Rockdale County. Data are similarly distributed for our middle schools, with students identified as experiencing homelessness at each school. And high school data also indicates students experiencing homelessness at each school. As we saw with the 2022-2023 data, the majority of the students who have been identified under McKinney-Vento this school year are sharing housing, with 1,395 in this category. Approximately 134 reported living in a hotel or motel. Some families have been displaced due to flood or fire and stay in hotels temporarily. Others reside in hotels due to the inability to secure a lease or rental agreement because of poor credit or other barriers. Hotel stays can range from a few days to multiple years. Fifty-three of our students experiencing homelessness stayed in shelters. These include local transitional housing, including Phoenix Pass, Family Promise, and Project Renewal. We do not have an emergency shelter in Rockdale County. Finally, we've had 14 students who reported other housing situations. This could be families temporarily staying in their cars or RV campers. Imagine a mom and her kids at Pine Log Park. They left their home due to a domestic disagreement and don't know where they're going to stay. A teacher sees them there and calls the principal, who calls the social worker, who calls the MV liaison. An RCPS employee blesses them with a hotel for the night and dinner from Chick-fil-A, their first time eating Chick-fil-A. This gives the mom just a moment to catch her breath and make a plan for where they can stay for the foreseeable future. This is homelessness in Rockdale County. Unstable housing and homelessness have significant impact on education. Children and youth experiencing homelessness often face chronic health problems and experience trauma as they endure frequent mobility in search of adequate and regular housing. This mobility and instability can lead to chronic absenteeism, increased behavior referrals, and lower graduation rates. The lack of a high school degree is the single greatest factor for adult homelessness. Graduation is our goal for every student, and it is especially important for students who have experienced or are experiencing homelessness. The McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act provides educational rights and services to children and youth experiencing homelessness. Some of the key requirements of the MV Act are to engage an MV liaison. Our liaison is Kathia Brown, and she also serves as our foster care liaison. Ms. Brown collaborates with schools and departments to ensure all provisions under the McKinney-Vento Act are in place. Students who qualify under McKinney-Vento are entitled to immediate enrollment. This means the student can be enrolled without some of their required documents and without delay. For example, if a family has to leave their home due to fire and relocate to Rockdale County, we can enroll them without their birth certificates and work with the families as well as their previous districts to obtain the required documents. Other provisions include school stability and transportation. If a student is enrolled at Conyers Middle School and becomes displaced and moves into the Edwards Middle School Zone, they can remain at Conyers Middle School as their school of origin, and the district will provide transportation. This allows students to maintain a stable experience at school despite the instability they may be facing at home. Finally, our MV liaison works to remove barriers for families, and this can include making referrals to other agencies or organizations that can provide support beyond what the school district can provide. As you may imagine, housing and financial assistance are the most common needs expressed by families. As a school district, we can't provide housing or pay bills. We can, however, refer families to resources for housing and financial assistance. Just to offer a brief history of the McKinney-Vento Act, it was signed into law in 1987. Revisions in 1990 and 1994 added supports for academic success, preschool services, and parental input. It was reauthorized under No Child Left Behind in 2002, requiring school districts to appoint a local liaison, and was then reauthorized in 2015 under the Every Student Succeeds Act to expand school of origin rights. Following the COVID pandemic, RCPS received additional funding for students experiencing homelessness through elementary and secondary school emergency relief under the American Rescue Plan, or ARP. These funds allowed for greater flexibility to assist our students and families. Over the course of the years that these funds were available, our MV liaison and student supports team worked to identify the specific needs of students experiencing homelessness in our district. As a result, we purchased transportation vouchers for parents to attend school functions or pick up their students, as well as grocery and clothing shopping cards. We employed a community navigator to develop a resource guide that we continue to share with families. We hired a part-time MV graduation specialist to support our secondary students. One of the advantages of the ARP funds was the flexibility to pay for hotel vouchers. We were able to provide brief hotel stays for families with these funds as they worked to secure more stable housing. Remember our unaccompanied youth? RCPS was able to pay for him to stay in a hotel as he completed his education. He went on to Job Corps where he was successful. This is homelessness in Rockdale County. While we can no longer use ARP funds, we were awarded the McKinney-Vento Homeless Education Grant at the start of the 2425 school year. This grant runs on a three-year cycle, so we anticipate continued funding for the next two years. With these funds, we have prioritized enrollment support for families that includes collaboration with student registration and assistance with retrieval of records, including helping parents obtain birth certificates for their children. The greatest cost associated with our students experiencing homelessness is transportation to and from their school of origin, so this has also been a priority with our McKinney-Vento funds. In addition, our MV liaison refers families to local and regional organizations who can provide additional services. We have also hired an MV clerk to assist with responding to requests for information and support, as well as identification of students and record-keeping. I'm excited to share that we're bringing back our MV graduation specialist as a part-time MV student support specialist to meet with our seniors as they transition to college. We are using MV funds to pay for graduation fees for some of our seniors, and we continue to provide clear backpacks and school supplies as needed. Imagine a family of students proudly attending Rockdale County Schools suddenly displaced by a flood. They have to leave their home but have the opportunity to stay with family in a neighboring county. They are hoping the home repairs will only take a couple of weeks while they take over the extra bedroom at a family member's home, but the repairs drag on, and they're not able to return for an extended period of time. RCPS collaborates with the neighboring district to provide transportation to and from Rockdale Schools and maintain school stability. This is homelessness in Rockdale County. School stability provisions of McKinney-Vento apply to students who are displaced to other counties. If it is feasible for the district to transport these students to and from Rockdale Schools, we are required to do so. Our transportation department works in collaboration with DeKalb, Henry, Gwinnett, and Newton Counties to ensure students maintain school stability. This means long days for some of our students. Last year, we started an after-school connections program. Our students identified under McKinney-Vento who live outside of Rockdale County come to RCA after school, and our early learning center staff provide academic support and after-school fun as they wait for their buses to take them home. This program has allowed our students to receive support with homework, as well as a snack and a break as their day extends well beyond normal school hours. In Rockdale, we maintain a focus on continuous improvement, so we are always examining our student numbers and input from students and parents to ensure we have the most important and appropriate supports in place. We have revised our 2526 online registration application to improve our process for identifying students experiencing homelessness. We're also entering into a partnership with United Way at Peaks Chapel Elementary to refer families in need of housing assistance. We hope this program will lead to families getting out of hotels and into homes, and eventually extend to other schools in the district. We are in the planning stages of increasing our collaboration with families through an MV Parent Advisory Panel. At the foundation of all of these supports is increased capacity at the district and school levels, as well as community collaboration. Imagine a caring team of educators at RCA planning activities for their students in after-school connections. A fantastic transportation specialist who routes our students and somehow manages to be everywhere and right on time. A caring MV liaison who meets families where they are and tries to get them what they need. Teachers and school staff, social workers, administrators, board members concerned about the well-being of students who can't control housing situations and who are willing to help on a moment's notice. This is homelessness in Rockdale County. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
First off, I've been on the board for two years, and I've heard about McKinney-Vento. I had no idea how it actually worked in practicality and the logistics behind it. So thank you so very much for your presentation. I'm going to go back to slide four of your presentation.
Okay.
And this is just sheer morbid curiosity. Rockdale County had 8% of our students that were experiencing homelessness in comparison to 2.3% statewide. Do you have any idea why there's that disproportionality in Rockdale versus the state, or is that pretty indicative of Metro Resa?
I believe that shared housing is one of the largest. The percentage was 86% for Rockdale in this chart, where the nation was 70 and Georgia was 75. So we do have a greater percentage experiencing shared housing. We definitely have, that's by far our largest population, is families that are doubled up or tripled up. They're staying with others, they're not leaseholders, they're not property owners, they have no documents connecting them to the residence where they stay.
Gotcha. Thank you so much.
I do, I have a question. When we talk about community collaboration, what needs could the community provide, and how can they reach out to offer their services?
Rent assistance and assistance with bills are the two big things that we cannot provide. And any community organization that is able to provide assistance can reach out to me or Kathia Brown, and will work in collaboration with our team to determine how we can connect families with supports. We also, though, we provide, Ms. Brown has a small food pantry in her office because people bring her things. She has a small clothing closet in her office. We do have school supplies and backpacks. And while we can't purchase the clothing and grocery cards any longer, we still have some from those ARP funds, and we do also have transportation vouchers for parents. So if they have to come pick up their child, but they don't have a car, we'll send an Uber to get them and then send them both home by that means. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sayago.
I have a question. So if, if, how do we identify those families experiencing homelessness? And I know this is going to be a crazy question, but how do we identify those families experiencing homelessness if it's not reported? I guess because I would imagine that we do have people living in hotels, and a lot of them not wanting to come forward, because think about how we violate, how they feel we violate their privacy. Like I've had experience in the past with families who experience homelessness, and a lot of times, they're not forthcoming with needing the help. So my question is like, how do we identify? Are there other ways that we identify those families to say, you know, we really just want to help you. We're on your side, we're not trying to come and take over your life, because that's part of what they think, that we want to invade their privacy and take over their lives, and we really just want to save them and help their children. So that's the first part of that question, first part of the question. I do have another question, and I want you to respond to that one first.
Okay. We have a large number of families. 134 have been reported this year living in hotels, and Ms. Brown does have a good relationship with most of our hotels. So the hotels will sometimes let her know there's a family with children, the buses go to the hotels. And so I do, I do feel like we are connected with our families who are staying in hotels, and they are sending their children to school. We identify, one of the students that I mentioned as an example was identified by a board member. The community helps us get children that are homeless into school, whether they are staying with family, whether they are unhoused, staying in cars. Fortunately, it seems that that situation is short. If a family's staying in a car, the community wraps around, and another community entity gets them into a hotel or gets them to another city that has an emergency shelter or helps get them into Phoenix Pass or Family Promise. So I do feel like the community recognizes when there's a school-age child not in school, including the hotels. I hope that answered your question.
It does, it does. And my next question is, under child find, once we've identified, and this is something that's kind of dear to my heart, because like I said, I've worked with those children, and I've seen how detrimental it could be to them, not only academically, but emotionally. So under child find, once we've identified those families or children experiencing homelessness, is there a way that we kind of, I hate to say track, but kind of track and monitor those children to see if, along the way, do they need any type of support? And I'm not talking financial support, you know what I'm talking about, any type of emotional, psychological support. Is there a way to kind of track those children within the schools?
Yes, we do use our early warning system within our student information system to identify our students and look at grades, look at attendance. Our social workers really wrap around them as best they can. They have a lot of schools that they serve, but they do wrap around the students and make sure to provide supports and work very closely with Ms. Brown. With increasing numbers of students, it's harder to provide individual interventions, but that is, of course, at the forefront and a priority for serving our students.
Thank you very much for the information.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Megan?
I wanted to, not Megan, I wanted to do something a little bit backwards, if you'll indulge me. One question for Shawna Miller I was trying to ask before she walked away from the microphone. Shawna Miller, our partnership with the library has been longstanding with our students being able to borrow books over the summer and do their thing. LG4A is a grant, okay? If we're now losing that partnership with the library, what happens when that grant goes away? Question one. Question number two, the books that we're purchasing this year, $110,300, are the books being turned back in, so we're using it again, or are we going to be approving $300,000 in books over the summer over the next infinite amount of years?
First question, L4GA does not negate any partnerships we have with the library. That is, we still have those going strong with all grade bands. I can definitely speak for Birth to Five, we do events there all the time. That doesn't, none of that is negated. And sidebar, we're actually going to plan some book clubs there, where we're going to also purchase more books to give out to the community. That's one of our events for closing out this grant. The second question that you asked, this is a one-time purchase for each student. The reason why we're doing it now is because of the shift in the ELA standards. So we need to get ahead of it, you know, like when we purchased Clear Book Bags. We can't, everybody didn't have them in stock that first year, you know? Target didn't know they needed to buy a Clear Book Bag. So now everybody carries Clear Book Bags because that's a need for our community. Well, all of these books that we're going to change to next year for each of these units of studies, they're not going to have access to them initially. So we are covering the first unit of study for each student in Rockdale County for this summer. In the fall, we've also approved novel kits, so the students forevermore will have access to those in the classroom and be able to check them out. But this is just taking care of a need that we need to fill right now into next school year. The timing just worked out really well because it was a need that we have right now to kind of cross that bridge into the fall standards.
So not in an obligatory kind of manner, but in a voluntary capacity? We're not even going to ask those students who might have ninth grade, use the books, can you turn those books in so another year of students?
Oh, no, we can totally ask. We could ask that.
That's what I'm asking.
That's a great idea.
Embed in any kind of, like, saving money.
Like a lending library.
To say that, you know, after the students are finished with these books, if we're using, if we're going to be asking, I remember when my five children went through school, they were reading the same books summer after summer after summer, meaning it's the same books, right? So if we now have a ninth grader that we've just bought all these books for, can we have a program where some of these books are being turned back in so we're not buying again or we're not asking the parents?
I think that's a great idea, and that's just something that we need to put into our process. I think it's a wonderful idea, and we'll do that.
Thank you. That was it. I'm sorry, I have to call you back to the microphone.
It was my pleasure. I haven't got enough steps today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller, and thank you, Ms. Megan. Next, we have.
Ms. Ball, she is filling in for Ms. Fallon.
Good evening, Chairwoman Jackson Lett, again, and Vice Chair Gins, and our board members, and our guests that are still with us. We're happy you're still here. Superintendent Chesser, I am filling in for April Fallon. As you know, I am not April Fallon. But I am going to talk to you a little bit about Senate Bill 395 that was signed into law, and this is really about the anti-opioid medications and allowing the administration of the opioid antagonist for train staff members in government buildings, including schools. So this opens the doors for us to be able to have this in our schools, and we actually have been part of an early-on program where we have done this. But this is now into law. And here's an article, actually, an airing on 11 Alive from January 2023 that was one of those early articles of schools providing this to their staff members. was one of those early articles of schools providing this to their staff members and to have on hand. So we're, you know, we were at the forefront of this a few years ago. So what are, you know, what are some updates locally for us? Because again, this is something that we have had in place. And, you know, what we're going to do is look at the law and look at Wesley's Law and actually work on the details of that and just ensure that our policy follows the letter of the law. But we're very much aligned. We do have 75 staff members who have received Narcan training. Narcan is a brand name for the opioid antagonist. It is a brand name that GNR, Gwinnett Newton Rockdale Public Health Department, has distributed after providing trainings to our staff members. So our staff members who are trained include all of our clinic staff, our school safety staff, athletic trainers, our PNI specialists. And then upon completing the training, these staff members were given each two kits from GNR, and these are free to anyone who went through the training. We also participate in the Free Narcan for Schools program through, it's actually a distributor called District, I mean, I'm sorry, Direct Relief. And they provide free Narcan kits for all high schools. So only high schools. But again, it's another free resource for us. We are at, looking at an expiration of 2025 for the ones that were received in 2023. And I just received an email for them this week that we will, they will again supply us with those free kits once those expire in, or closer to the expiration in October. All of our SROs also carry Narcan or, you know, again, that's a brand name, but they carry Narcan or a similar product on them and have training through their law enforcement agencies. And again, we're reviewing our regulation. It's not actually a policy. It's a regulation attached to JGCD, which is a medication revision to make sure that it's updated and includes the Wesley Law language. The proposed plan is to ensure that at minimum, our clinic staff receives the training annually. And that's already been coordinated with Gwinnett Newton Rockdale to have Tom Branch, who is their expert, come and do that training again. So again, we'll have those additional Narcan kits on hand. So we have quite a few on hand now and a lot of staff are trained. And that training will be ongoing. I also want to just shift gears a little bit away from the product and talk to you about a safety meeting we held earlier this week. And this was in collaboration, really it was Chief Freeman with the City of Conyers, who asked our superintendent and the sheriff if we could all get together and talk about what's happening in the community and what they are seeing from a law enforcement perspective. And they're seeing an increase across the county. And it's not just in our schools. They're seeing it among, you know, the adults in the community. And, you know, they really just wanted to come together and say, what can we do about it? You know, we're all in this, bringing different pieces of the community together, but how can we work together to try to reduce some of the things that we're seeing, again, with our young people, but also the adults in the community? At this meeting, you'll see there was a large group there. We had the City of Conyers, certainly the sheriff and a lot of law enforcement partners were there. But we also had the emergency room director from Piedmont Rockdale. We had some folks from another organization that supports some of the adults in the community that have addictions and some of our school safety personnel as well. So, you know, we kind of said, well, what can we do right now? What are some of the things that we can do right now before the end of the school year, before our students get out for the summer? You know, what can we do? And so in a very quick fashion, we said, well, you know, we can use our homerooms to do some video, educational videos with our students in the short time that they're in homeroom. Nothing long because they're not going to watch it long. They're all going to put their head down and fall asleep, right? So we're talking about little short video vignettes. But what we did to localize it is we had our superintendent and our chief of police and our sheriff do a video entry. So the three of them, and you can see that bottom shot right there, that's actually one of our students from Heritage who came and filmed it. But we are taking that message and local, and attaching it to an educational video and to show to our students. So that's one thing we said, you know, we can put this together really quickly. And that's one thing that we are going to do. The other thing that we said we could do very quickly in the community is have a town hall. And so we said, okay, let's find a date. Now, this all happened in the past couple of days. So just know that you haven't gotten information yet because it's still, it's still being put together. But we did come together on a date. That date will be Monday, May 12. It'll start at 6:00 PM and it'll be at Rockdale Career Academy. So what we're doing now is working on what the agenda looks like, what the flyer looks like, you know, who the experts are that are going to be there. Law enforcement made it clear, it doesn't need to be a law enforcement talking head. We need to have the health experts there, the addiction experts there. We need to have people there that, you know, may have lost a family member, maybe even a child due to an overdose or, you know, a fentanyl overdose. So we're working on that. April and I are working very closely with our partners to bring this together. So I just wanted to share that as a closing comment on this. Any questions?
Yes, Ms. Brown?
My question with the Narcan medication in high school, do we know how many incidents that we've already had? And have we had any incidents in elementary and even in middle school?
To my knowledge, we've had one incident since we've had these in our schools in 2023. And I believe that was a high school level. I'd have to confirm that for you. Yeah. Now, I will say again, the free program does provide the free kits for high school only, but we do have it in all of our clinics at elementary, middle, and high because we also know that this is an adult issue. It's not necessarily an elementary child that may be affected, but we may have an adult that may need some help. So.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
I'll just add, Mrs. Brown, one of the things in our conversation with all of the intergovernmental agencies that were there is we realize, you know, there's already a focus on the secondary end, but we really want to make sure as we do this work that we're talking to our young elementary students because we recognize that they have those older siblings or they're engaging with those older adults. And as you noticed when Mr. Green presented his information a couple of months ago, I believe that was last month, you know, a lot of these things that the children are eating and consuming, they look just like candy. So we want to make sure that we're starting with our young people. So as we're doing these videos, we're not just talking on the middle and high school side. We're beginning early and we're starting with our elementary children and doing it, progressing through middle to high schools as well.
Yeah. And I think, you know, the conversation that we had really, really did talk about that. And some of that's a little bit longer term, you know, the video vignettes and things are things that we said, well, we can do this now. You know, we can do this in a very short amount of time. But the discussion did lead to long-term, how do we roll this out to that younger child to understand at a young age the effects of some of these decisions that are made as an older teen or as an adult?
Thank you.
And then wrapping up, we, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kenny.
I don't need Ms. Ball for this. I don't need you for this. But on the topic of Narcan, this is just from my own personal experience going through a CPR class. And I was in a class with folks that were training to be nurses. I don't know if this is still an issue, but this may be something for council's office to think about. There was a true worry in that room when we were talking about Narcan, potential liability and the administration of Narcan because they had a fundamental misunderstanding of how the drug works. So it may be beneficial to have a little legal primer as our faculty and staff go through that training to talk about any potential legal ramifications, if any, regarding the administration of Narcan.
Thank you. And Mr. Kenny, you're correct. I know as Dr. Smith Dixon has been working on that Wesley's Law and updating that regulation, she has been in consultation with Mr. Flanagan to make sure that we are definitely in compliance and have a clear understanding. Yes, sir.
It's been remiss if I didn't mention.
Oh, no, sir. I appreciate that. But I promise you, that has been, that is in the works. Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Thank you. Next.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Jackson Lett, Vice Chair Jones, remaining board members, Superintendent Chesser, Cabinet and guests. Tonight I'll be bringing the final financial report for the month of March. The revenues for the month of March were $11.6 million for the month and $186.6 million year-to-date, representing 85.5% of our budget. Revenues this time last year were $10.4 million for the month and $168.9 million year-to-date, representing 84.5% of our budget. Expenditures were $18.5 million. Year-to-date, we're at $162.4 million, representing 73.2% of our budget. Expenditures last year were $17.4 million. Year-to-date, we're at $156.8 million. That represented 76.5% of the budget. Incumbrances, excuse me, are $1,478,579. Our current fund balance is $52,796,761. Last year, the fund balance was at 48,380,943. On our balance sheet, we have assets of $52,796,761. Our liabilities have been cleared at $0. Fund balance again is $52,796,761. I'll also be bringing SPOS. SPOS V collections ended in February 2024. The collection rate of SPOS V was at 127%. Revenues received were $108.2 million. Expenses are currently at $104.5. And the current balance is approximately $3.7 million. Our SPOS VI collections are ongoing and will end in March 2029. Revenues received to date is $15.9 million. Expenses are $6.4 million. And the current balance in SPOS VI is approximately $9.5 million. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
What's the anticipated collection amount for us, number six?
So the, that is.
Anticipated. If you don't have it, you can get back.
$139.
$35 million?
Does that include the overage or is that the original estimated? Yeah, was I do, I knew the county SPOS, I know they're collecting around $700,000 additional each month. It's penny for penny, so we should be collecting the same amount. So I just want to know also, I mean, I think that's the conversation we need to have eventually is what we intend to how to utilize the overage from this SPOS because it will be a significant amount of funds.
We're actually, we did over, and I don't know the amount currently, right now, but SPOS V, we did overcollect. We collected over our anticipated amount.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Smith. The cabinet has provided numerous presentations under information. I would like to ask the board members to please review the information. The board had reviewed the minutes for all board meetings held in March. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for all board meetings held in March?
Right. And seconded by Heather.
A motion to approve March 2025 board meeting as presented has been made by Ms. Janie Jones and seconded by Ms. Heather Duncan. Is there any discussion? All in favor? The motion is approved by 7-0. There is no old business, but we do have new business. Do I hear a recommendation to approve, the superintendent recommendation to approve the purchase of a lead content solution totaling $54,149.36 to support summer learning material? A motion has been made by Ms. Janie Jones and seconded by Ms. Heather Duncan. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion is approved, 7-0. Do I hear a recommendation to approve, the superintendent recommendation to approve the purchase of lead content totaling $110,417.47 to support summer learning reading material for all ELA courses?
So moved.
A motion has been made by Ms. Heather Duncan and seconded by Ms. Janie Jones. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion is approved by 7-0. Do I hear a recommendation to approve, the superintendent recommendation to approve the purchase of teacher-created materials totaling $381,345 to support summer leading, reading, summer learning?
So moved, Heather.
A motion has been made by Ms. Heather Duncan and seconded by Kita Palmer. Is there any discussion? All in favor? The motion approved, 7-0. Last week, the board voted to place numerous action items on a consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the action items under the consent agenda?
So moved.
A motion to approve the action item under consent agenda has been made by Ms. Heather Duncan and seconded by Ms. Janie Jones. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion is approved, a 7-0 vote. Do I have, oh, we may have gone, no we not? It's an agenda. Now, we do have a board discussion.
Thank you. Last week, I had asked our superintendent if it would be possible for me to visit some schools and observe some of our children in the classrooms. She so graciously granted my request and took me on a tour last Friday of several schools. And I was just very impressed with what I saw in the classrooms. We started off by going to Pine Street Elementary. And when we were at Pine Street Elementary, I got to observe teachers in the classroom interacting with children. We, a moment ago, just passed, voted on to approve some teaching materials and such. I got to see our teachers interacting with our students, using those tools in the classroom. And I was very impressed with that because we hear acronyms on the board. We hear, you know, that these successes are happening. And we hear the presenters come and tell us, you know, that we're using these tools. But when a board member goes to the classroom and we see those tools being implemented and how impressive it is, then we know how important it is to make sure we fund these programs when we're asked to and these presenters come before us and ask us this. Then we went from Pine Street over to High Tower. And when we got to High Tower, they were having a career day at High Tower. And you had the police department, you had the fire department, you had animal control, you had doctors, you had nurses, you had IT specialists, you had every spectrum of any kind of career that you could do. Our, our school, our social, they had worked so hard to make sure that these kids had the opportunity to talk to all these different professionals and have an understanding of what they could do moving forward. Again, I got, I got to see our students in the classroom. I got to observe them interacting with their teachers. And again, I was impressed with what I saw in our Rockdale County school system. Then we decided that we were going to go somewhere else and we went to Salem High School. We went to Salem High School. High School. We went to Salem High School. And again, I got to observe students in the classroom interacting with our teachers. Again, some of the programs that we have talked about where we, we get the teachers that come from other countries that, that come here. I got to see one of those teachers instructing these children. We, we have the program where we have the, the video teacher and the, and the, and the person in the classroom. I got to observe one of, one of those classrooms. And, and then this is the great part, what I liked, I got to observe. I got to observe changing of the classes. Okay. And, and one might think you've got a bunch of high school kids and they're changing classes and it's going to be this wild, you know, noise and whatever. Let me tell you what. If the superintendent hadn't told me they were trade changing classes, I wouldn't have known they were changing classes. It was organized, it was professional, and they knew what they were doing. I was very impressed with, with what they have done at Salem High School and how the, the staff there run that school. I was very impressed. So we decided to finish out the day by going to Memorial, Memorial Middle School. And, and we go there and, and the, 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 the principal was outside because they, they're doing a project, they're, they're building a garden. And we go out there and they're out there working on the garden. The principal from RCA is there and he backs his truck up and the RCA students had built benches to donate to the garden at Memorial. And then not only that, there was community members there. You had leadership Rockdale had representatives there helping with the garden. And then, you know, and then we had somebody say, we've only got one problem. This ground is so hard and we, we have this little light tiller and we don't think it's going to do the job. So Superintendent Chesser says, well, do you know George Kellacek? He, he helps them over at Honey Creek. He may be able to help you plow your garden. I pulled my phone out and I gave the principal George Kellacek's number. George Kellacek called me later that evening and said, Larry, I got a call. I'm going to go and plow their garden. Because George Kellacek has a large tiller. So what we saw at Memorial, we saw collaboration. We saw two schools working together. We saw a community organization. We saw the superintendent say, well, we know this guy in the community that's willing to help. We gave the information, they called him and he helped. What I saw on these school visits is a Rockdale County coming together. I saw a Rockdale County working together in unity so that we can provide a quality education for our children and we can grow this community. I'm already proud of this community, but we're going to be prouder. Those are my comments and I thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, Mr. Larry Cox, board member Cox. Next we will have coming Mr. Justin Kenny. Somebody has something?
Oh, no, I, I was going to say Larry, the number seven is completion, perfection, you know, that's the meaning. You were very impressed seven times. I love it. I love it. No, you did. It was the most frequent. So I'm, I'm glad that you are able to go through the school system and see that we are doing impressive things with our kids. So I say that in jest, but I mean it from the heart. We're doing great things for our kids.
Absolutely. Mr. Kenny?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And contrary to habit, I will try to be brief. But simply want to comment, or excuse me, commend the board and administration on last week's meeting. I thank Chairwoman Jackson Lett on her vision to honor our hometown heroes who work tirelessly in the community in which they were raised, the community in which they are wholly invested. I commend Superintendent Chesser and her administration, and particularly Ms. Cindy Ball, on their execution of last week's celebration. Of late, many hard discussions have been had right here in this room. We've seen tears fall and smiles filled with joy. We've heard angry outbursts and cheerful glees. We've seen in this room the entire spectrum of emotions from both the community and our leadership, all because of the decisions we've made herein. Though everyone present between these walls has had the best interest of students at heart for months, the ceiling of this room somehow felt lower, seemingly weighed down by the worry and concern of an entire community. But not last week because RCPS now has the spark of a renewed energy. Last week, we witnessed the overwhelming pride of those who graduated from our very own school system who came back to serve its next generation. This room was filled with mirth, with hope. But most importantly, this room was filled with camaraderie, with a group of people who not only yearn for, but worked tirelessly to see this community prosper. For once in a long time, the people who entered this room left it with smiles on their faces and there was barely an empty seat in it. I say Godspeed to this board, its leadership and our superintendent. I'm proud to be able to work with each of you for the betterment of RCPS. With that, Madam Chair, I yield the floor.
Thank you. Mr. Kenny, does anyone else have any comments? No comments? Well, I would like to also echo what Mr. Kenny said because even after they receive them in the end of office mail, they've been calling, thank you, thank you, thank you. So they are overjoyed with that last weekend. They said, come with something else. That's right, Ms. Shawna Miller? Well, thank you all. Do I hear motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel matters? A motion to go into executive session has been made by Ms. Janie Jones and second by Ms. Kita Palmer. Any discussion? All in favor? 7-0, 7-0. We'll go into executive session.
All right. It is now nine fifty-four and the board has come back into open session. Do I have recommendation, do I have a move, a motion to approve the superintendent recommendation to transfer Dr. Kenesha Richmond current principal Shaw Creek Elementary School to assist the principal CJ Hicks Elementary School effective July first, two thousand and twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Ms. Heather Duncan and second by Mr. Justin Kenny. Any further discussion? All in favor? Seven zero. Do I have motion to approve the superintendent recommendation to appoint Mr. Ronnie Banyard, Jr., current assistant principal at Rockdale County High School to principal Shaw Creek Elementary School effective July first, two thousand and twenty-five?
So moved, Justin.
A motion has been made by Mr. Justin Kenny and second by Ms. Janie Jones. Any further discussion? All in favor. Seven zero. Do I have motion to approve the superintendent recommendation to transfer Ms. Sherri Waddell, current assistant principal at CJ Hicks Elementary, to assistant principal at Shaw Creek Elementary effective July first, two thousand and twenty-five?
Second, Justin.
A motion has been made by Ms. Janie Jones and second by Mr. Justin Kenny. Any further discussion? All in favor. Seven zero. Do I have motion to approve the superintendent recommendation to transfer Mrs. Helen Melanie Houli, current assistant principal at Epic to assistant principal at Edwards Middle School effective July first, two thousand and twenty-five?
Second, Justin.
A motion has been made by Ms. Janie Jones and second by Mr. Justin Kenny. Any further discussion? All in favor. The motion approved seven zero. Do I have motion to approve the superintendent recommendation to transfer Dr. Shawna Green, current assistant principal at Conyers Middle School to assistant principal at Heritage High School effective July first, two thousand and twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Ms. Heather Duncan and second by Mr. Justin Kenny. Any further discussion? All in favor. The motion is approved by seven zero vote. Do I have motion to approve the superintendent recommendation to transfer Ms. Kila Jones, current assistant principal at Black Show's Elementary School to assistant principal at Honey Creek Elementary School effective July first, two thousand and twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Ms. Heather Duncan and second by Mr. Justin Kenny. Any further discussion? All in favor. The motion is approved seven zero. Do I have motion to approve the superintendent recommendation to transfer Ms. Zantrina Morton, current assistant principal at Heritage High School to assistant principal at Rockdale County High School effective July first, two thousand and twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Ms. Heather Duncan and second by Mr. Justin Kenny. Any further discussion? All in favor. A seven zero vote. Do I have motion to approve the superintendent recommendation to transfer Ms. Nicole Porter, current assistant principal at Peaks Chapel Elementary to assistant principal at JH House effective July first, two thousand and twenty-five?
Second, Heather.
A motion has been made by Janie Jones and second by Ms. Heather Duncan. Is there any further discussion? All in favor. The motion is approved by seven zero vote. With no further business to discuss, do I have motion to conclude the meeting?
So moved, Janie Jones. Second, Heather.
A motion to conclude the meeting has been made by Ms. Janie Jones and second by Ms. Heather Duncan. Anybody want to discuss that? All in favor. The meeting is concluded at nine fifty-eight. You all have a great night.